All the board, or the board meeting, the start of the board meeting at 7:01 PM. I'm going to introduce myself, welcome everyone, I am President Lauren Christensen. Thank you for all being here this evening, and we'll start with Ms. McCoyn.
Penny McCoyn, thank you so much for being here tonight.
I'm Sherona Picard, and it's nice to see everyone.
Amina Ahmed, thank you so much for joining us.
Good evening, Josh Patterson, Student Voice in Action Co-Chair at Plymouth Junior.
Good evening, everyone, I'm Anupam Chitsedu, thanks for being here.
Good evening, thanks for coming out, I'm Judy Westra.
Hi, I'm Patrick Huer, thanks for joining us this evening.
Okay, and Dr. Merritt, can you introduce yourself and your team?
Good evening and welcome, I'm Superintendent Monica Merritt, I'd like to begin by introducing Ms. Diane Robertson, my executive assistant, we want to thank her for being here to keep us all on track and take our minutes to ensure that the community has the information that occurred in the board's business meeting. Also want to have Mr. John Krieger, who is here taking care of our technology as well as our visual needs, so we appreciate your videoing needs, we appreciate you, John, for your support. Want to ask the remaining members of the team, beginning on my right, to introduce themselves to you.
Thank you, Dr. Merritt, Curtis Wood, Assistant Superintendent for Student Services, welcome.
Good evening, Jill Minnick, Chief Finance and Operations Officer, welcome.
Hi, welcome, I'm Beth Rail, Chief Academic and Innovation Officer, thank you for being here this evening.
Good evening, I'm Abdul Matyun, Chief Human Resources Officer, thank you for being here today.
Sayyid.
Hi, everyone, I'm Sayyid Puar, and I'm a senior at Canton High School as well as a student coacher for Student Voice in Action.
Okay, let's please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, on to the adoption of the agenda and approval of the consent agenda, this is action item number 25-10-21, can I please have a motion?
Madam President, I move that we adopt the agenda, approve the consent agenda, action item number 25-10-21.
Second.
Okay, it was moved by Member Sudhu, and seconded by Treasurer Kejo, Dr. Merritt, can you take us through the agenda, please?
Thank you, President Christensen, this evening, our consent agenda consists of human resources transactions, it's our last time together. This evening, for your consideration, we have new hires as well as retirements, we have the regular meeting minutes from September the 24th, 2024, and the special meeting minutes from October 1st, 2024. For first readings, we have Policy 9150, that is about school visitors, and we have final readings of Policy 6520, payroll deductions. Also, for your consideration this evening, we have an out-of-country field trip, and we have the following action items, the resolution for a tentative agreement with the Plymouth Canton Association of Education Office Personnel, and this has been ratified by their union, as well as the consideration of the approval for a tentative agreement with the Plymouth Canton Plant Engineers, and this too has been ratified by their union.
Great, thank you, I'm going to ask for the vote, those in favor, please say yes, yes, those opposed, say no. Motion, bless you, motion carries, 7-0. Okay, Mr. Madun, can you please take us through human resources?
Yes, I would first like to talk about some of our new hires, we have three new hires today, first is Deborah Taggart, she's hired as a resource room teacher, Erickson, I believe, she's here, could you stand? And maybe, she's not here. The second hire was Samantha Van Krevelin, who's hired as a cognitive impaired teacher at Bentley. And then we have Abigail Casperovich, who is hired now as the accounts payable position at non-central office, we welcome all these new hires to Plymouth Canton Public Schools. Then I would also like, we have one retirement, we have Tanya McCrain, who has been, is retired as a curriculum coordinator of science, health, and PE, she has worked in the district since August of 1999. Oh, and can we give a round of applause for Ms. McCrain? And I couldn't, how could I forget this one? Lisa Vance, who is being recommended to be the Assistant to the Director of Special Education position, we welcome her into our new position and wish her luck in that, and we will be missing her downstairs, so she's going upstairs now, so I won't get to see her every day, and steal chocolate from her bowl every morning when I come into the office, so I kind of probably purposely forget that she's leaving us, but we congratulate her also.
Come to the ready place.
You're coming to the ready place. Also, I know they don't like, don't want to speak today, but I have some of our administrative assistants here today, could you just raise your hand? They don't like to speak much, but they wanted to come over and show that, you know, that we work together on these contracts, and as we was talking outside, you know, none of us are happy, happy, but we can live with it, so that, to me, is a good contract, so thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Madun. On to celebrating success, so this is Civic B Students with Member, or excuse me, Vice President McCoyn.
One of the best parts of the evening, move this so I don't use it. All right, good evening, everyone, it's a pleasure to welcome you to tonight's celebrating success ceremony, the Board of Education is excited to recognize the outstanding accomplishments of our PCCS students through the Stars Awards, we are honoring three remarkable former middle school students, Evan John, Simon Reed, and Rawan Hamad, who participated in the Canton Chamber of Commerce Civics B competition. This innovative competition organized by the Canton Chamber of Commerce in collaboration with the Michigan and U.S. Chamber of Commerce Foundation encourages young people to engage with the civics, with civics and contribute positively to their communities. Talented sixth, seventh, and eighth graders from Michigan showcase their civic knowledge for a chance to win recognition and cash prizes. The finalists will have the incredible opportunity to travel to Washington DC for the inaugural National Civics B Championship in November 2024. We're going to start with Evan John, a former student at East Middle School. Evan, here, come on up. Evan is a former student at East Middle School, he has made us proud by becoming Michigan's top finalist. This fall, he will represent our state at the National Civics B Championship in Washington DC to win up to $50,000. With aspirations of becoming a doctor, Evan aims to make a significant impact on global health driven by his passion and dedication. Looking ahead, Evan is excited about more than just the competition, I'm looking forward to meeting new people and connecting with fellow participants from across the country. I'm excited to exchange ideas and learn about the issues different communities are facing. We are excited to see his journey unfold this November. I'd like to invite Ted Youngless, Principal of East Middle School, to share some thoughts about Evan.
Thank you, it is with great pride that I stand before you to congratulate Evan, an outstanding former East Middle School student, on being selected as a top-three finalist in our area for the Civics B. But Evan's journey did not stop there, he went on to compete at the state level in July and won. Now, he will represent all of us at the national stage at the upcoming Civics B in November. What I find particularly inspiring is Evan's focus on pedestrian safety in our own Plymouth Canton community. His passion for civic engagement, addressing real-world issues, and commitment to making our community a safer place is truly admirable. As a former social studies teacher, it warms my heart to see a student so invested in others through the lens of civics. Evan, we are all incredibly proud of you, and we wish you the best of luck in Nationals, keep making a difference.
All right, on behalf of the Board of Education, I'm honored to present the Stars Award to Evan John for Student with Tenacity Achieving and Reaching Success. This award recognizes your outstanding achievement as a top finalist in the local competition and as the state's top finalist. Congratulations, we wish you the best of luck in Washington. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, everyone, for the congratulations, I'd just like to thank all my teachers, principals, and parents for all the encouraging support that got me to the place I here I am today, thank you.
All right, next, we have Simon Reed. Simon Reed is a former West Middle School student, he showcased his talents as one of the top-three finalists among 20 participants at the live National Civics B Competition at Eastern Michigan University. His impressive performance also earned him a spot in the state competition in Lansing where he won $500. Simon is known for his intelligence and strong academic performance, his teachers commend him for his unwavering desire to make a difference in the world, they highlight how he consistently steps up to help his classmates understand complex concepts, demonstrate his passion for helping others succeed. I'd like to have Sherry Stuckel, Principal of West Middle School, share her insights on Simon.
Okay, so I would just say, I'm not good with reading things, I would say, simply put, Simon, Simon achieves, Simon achieves at absolutely anything he puts his mind to. I'll say that at West, Simon maintained a 4.0 GPA while also playing the violin for the youth symphony, while also going undefeated in cross-country, I mean, I watched you cross the finish line a number of times, and track. So when he set his sights on the Civics B, there was no doubt in anyone's mind that he was going to be super successful. Simon's teachers have described him as somebody who would research a topic and then just go above and beyond, somebody who would contribute to class discussions but also had super thoughtful responses. And Mr. Wooster, his eighth-grade teacher, gave me a quote, he said, "No matter what Simon is doing, he displays great effort, character, and leadership." So on behalf of all of us at West Middle School, congratulations.
On behalf of the Board of Education, I'm awarding you the Stars Award, Students with Tenacity Achieving and Reaching Success, in recognition for your achievement as a top finalist at the local competition and for achieving, going up to the state. Thank you so much, and great, good luck in high school, thank you. All right, do you want to say a few words? Sure you would.
I would like to thank two people, my dad and Mr. Wooster, my eighth-grade social studies teacher, because Mr. Wooster did a great job preparing me for this competition, and so did my dad, so thank you both.
All right, and now we have Rawan Hamad, a former student at Discovery Middle School, distinguished herself as one of the top-three finalists at the National Civics B Competition, successfully advancing to the state competition and earning $250. She is admired for her positive outlook in life, her teachers describe her as someone who sees the bigger picture and approaches challenges with a can-do attitude. She is dedicated to her education, striving to improve and seeking help when needed to fully grasp the material. With her hard work and bright spirit, we are confident she will continue to excel as she embarks on her freshman year at Canton High School. I would like to have Alex Norroyan, Principal of Discovery Middle School, come on up and share some insights.
Congratulations, Rawan, your achievement in the Civic B is a testament to your hard work and dedication. You showcase your knowledge and passion for civic engagement, and it's inspiring to see that your efforts have been recognized. Keep up the amazing work, you have made the Discovery community so proud. Continue to shine and make a difference in high school and beyond, go Eagles.
On behalf of the Board of Education, I'm honored to present you with the Stars Award, Students with Tenacity Achieving and Reaching Success. This is for your remarkable achievement as one of the top finalists in the local competition and advancing to the state competition. Would you like to say a few words?
I would like to say that I really enjoyed fostering civics knowledge over time and gaining that knowledge, and I would like to thank all my teachers that helped me study for civics at Discovery, thank you.
All right, we are truly honored to celebrate these exceptional students, each of whom has earned this recognition through hard work and dedication. Their journey to the National Civics B Competition is a testament to their talent and commitment, and we are proud to have them in our district. We wish them all the best as they continue their educational journey. And by the way, if you haven't, browse the National Civics B website, they have a quiz, it is not easy. I'm just saying. I've taught social studies. We'd also like to thank the Canton Chamber of Commerce for hosting the Michigan Civic B Competition, and Rania Hamood, our K-12 Curriculum Coordinator for Social Studies, for her invaluable support. I would like to invite Thomas Patton, Pam Batsho from the Canton Chamber of Commerce, along with Rania Hamood, to share a few words about these outstanding students.
All right, good evening, everyone, so we are really honored tonight to celebrate Evan, Rawan, and Simon for their hard work and dedication, participating in the National Civics B, so not only did they participate, they actually excelled and became finalists, so congratulations to these outstanding students who have made Plymouth Canton Community Schools so proud. And I have to say, as a former parent in the district, these are some of the reasons why people choose Plymouth Canton, it's because of these acknowledgements and rewards and recognitions that we have, and lots of celebrations regarding our students. So I will say, participation in the National Civics B, it goes beyond the competition, it helps students gain deeper understanding of our government and civic responsibility, it also helps our students sharpen their critical thinking skills in social studies, we try to implement a lot of that into our curriculum, and so this National Civics B was a perfect opportunity for us to have our students be able to incorporate their critical thinking and inquiry skills in their writing. And we were also fortunate to have the Canton Chamber of Commerce come out and celebrate our students by providing not one, but three pizza parties, there was a classroom pizza party for each of the finalists, Dr. Merritt happened to be at one of them, and I have to say, she was like a celebrity, at West Middle School, she came in, and you'd think she was like Taylor Swift, students were coming up, and like, no joke, they were asking for her autograph and asking to take selfies with her, so I was a little, I have to say, I was a little jealous of that, Dr. Merritt. Lastly, I'm also excited to share that all of our middle school students this upcoming school year will be participating in the National Civics B, so we're hoping to have all of our students participate and actually implement this in our social studies curriculum, so I have to thank the Canton and Michigan Chamber of Commerce for giving us this opportunity, and hopefully next year, this time, around this time of the year, we'll have three more finalists representing Plymouth Canton, so thank you so much.
Hi, I'm Pam Batsho, I'm representing the Canton Chamber of Commerce, and I'm here on behalf of Thomas Patton, he actually is stuck in traffic on his way back from Lansing where he's doing some other important work, as well as the Board of Directors for the Canton Chamber, and you've heard everything about these three students, and I can't add more to that that's going to make a greater impression on you, but we're so proud, I mean, I feel like their second mom, I was with them through the whole process running this program for the Chamber, we're doing it again this year, and Evan, I got a surprise for you, sir, if you win first place, you could win up to a $100,000 college education scholarship fund.
Wow.
So, keep going, next year, it's going to be the same, we are looking for more students, not just public school students, any students that you know that are in middle school, we need parents that support them, and we have that here in this community, and we thank you. We're also going to need some judges, because if every student from our middle school is going to participate this year, we're going to need some people to help us grade some essays. So, please, look for information in your email, check out the Canton Chamber of Commerce's website, the essay portal will open on October 15th, it will open until February 2nd, so you have some time to get it put together, thank you, thank you, thank you, we are so honored and proud to represent this group and the state of Michigan, I will be in Washington DC, so look for a flurry of Facebook posts.
Mr. Tiscus would like some pictures, winners with your families, just a real quick, up the hallway, with your families.
All right, oh my goodness, it's so impressive to be, you know, honoring our great minds, and like VP McCoyn said, this is one of our favorite parts of our board meetings, so I, yeah, we can't, we can't help but smile after that. Okay, so on to Board Committee Reports and Action, so I'm going to start off with the President's Report, I have a few things that I want to share, first and foremost, it's my great pleasure to officially welcome, oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were, I apologize, I thought you were saying something else, okay, it's, it is my great pleasure to officially welcome Amina Ahmed, the newest member of our Board of Education, to her first official meeting this evening. Your passion for education and the commitment to serving our students, staff, and families will surely strengthen our team of eight and impact the work we do, so just wanted to offer you a welcome of board, we're happy to have you here. Next, I want to provide a little update, we had a special board meeting actually just before this, at 5:30 this evening, around our expulsion training, so that's a requirement for all of the board members in order to participate in any board-level disciplinary hearings, so we learned a lot about, you know, some of us, it was a refresher course for other newer members, it was a new training, so we're all, we can all check that box if we've completed that, but there's been some new forms and procedures that we learned about as well, so I'm happy that we were able to get together before this meeting to do that. And then lastly, I know this has come up in our board notes a couple of times, but I just wanted to lift this to our meeting as well, and remind the team, we have a Wayne Risa General Membership Meeting, actually on Thursday, October 10th, at the Wayne Risa Building, so that's from 5:30 PM to 8:00 PM this Thursday, so it's a general membership meeting as well as an MASB Legislative Priority Meeting, and all board members in Wayne County are encouraged to attend. Members Sudhu actually provided a legislative update at our last meeting from your time in Lansing for the, that, the deep dive, forgive me, forgive me, what was that called? Oh, the MASB behind-the-scenes sessions, so there may be some repeat topics there, but they really want to have some representation from Weyton County board members to really formulate our legislative priorities as well. I do plan on attending, and I hope others from our board can also attend on Thursday, and that concludes my President's Report for this evening. Okay, up we have, up next, we have Student Performance and Achievement Committee with Anupam Sudhu.
Thank you, President Christensen, the Student Performance and Achievement, known as SPA, committee met last week, October 2nd, in this room, and we went through elementary program highlights along with the middle school program highlights, and you're going to get a glimpse of the middle school program highlights today, later on in the board meeting. We also looked at exciting course proposals, which is, which includes sports officiating, personal finance, which there's been a lot of talk about, and the creation of Peer-to-Peer Connections course, and renaming of the HSC Foods and Arts. Eventually, that's going to come to the board level for some votes, so I just want to give you a heads up. And we also discussed the out-of-country, or out of the contiguous areas of the US, which was on today's agenda under the consent agenda. Our next meeting is coming up on November, November 6th, in this room, please join us.
Thank you, on to the Policy Committee with VP McCoyn.
We have not met since our last meeting, we do have a meeting scheduled for October 22nd, we may be rescheduling that due to some conflicts from some of the members, we will let you know.
Thank you, on to Finance and Operations Committee with Treasurer Kejo.
We did not meet at the scheduled last meeting, there was only one action item, the Chiller purchase for Plymouth High School, which we've discussed previously at Finance and Operations, and there was also a number of administrators and board members that were not going to be present, that Chiller discussion will be on the agenda for the, for the full board to consider this evening. We will be meeting next Thursday, October 17th, at 5:00 PM in this room, and we welcome everybody to come to the most exciting committee that we have.
Yes, okay, on to Student Voice in Action Committee with Sayyid and Josh.
Student Voice in Action has not met since our last meeting, but we are excited to announce that we had 60 new students apply to Student Voice in Action.
Our next SVA meeting will be held on October 21st at 4:30 in the Discovery Middle School Auditoria, and we welcome you to the actual most exciting committee. Fair enough, fair enough.
That's a little rivalry.
Yeah, we got school.
Nice job, Josh. I'm on both, and it's, it's real tough, I think I'm going to side with Josh and Sayyid for that one. Okay, on to the next section, Administrative Reports and Recommendations, I'll kick it over to you, Dr. Merritt.
Thank you, President Christensen, before beginning my soup's report, I did want to follow up on a citizen's comment that occurred last week, it was our special meeting, so it wasn't a taped meeting, but I think it was significant enough to make sure that I addressed that publicly. During our meeting, it was brought to our attention that a sponsor mention was made at the football game of Plymouth High School two weeks ago, that was over the speaker, and it included a public endorsement of a judicial candidate. That sponsor mention was not approved by Plymouth Canton Community Schools, and as we know that action violates district policies, our Booster Club guidelines, the Michigan Campaign Finance Act, all of which strictly prohibit the use of public resources to endorse political candidates. So PCCS has addressed this matter, and of course, we are committed to ensuring strict adherence to all district policies and applicable laws moving forward, but I just wanted to take that opportunity to publicly first thank that citizen for bringing that forward, and just acknowledge publicly the actions that we have taken. Moving on, I want to remind our community this evening about the Wayne Risa Millage renewal, this is going to be before our voters on November the 5th at the general election ballot, this renewal is, supports the progress achieved by Wayne County Schools since the millage's renewal, I mean, original passage, I'm sorry, in 2016. We have critical funding for CTE programs, special education programs, reduction of class sizes, and an improved school safety in Wayne County. This is a renewal, not a new tax, so Wayne County residents can continue supporting their schools without a tax increase. If this millage is not renewed, it will result for Plymouth Canton in a loss of approximately 360 students, a dollar per student. Do want to remind all that 100% of this millage goes directly to local Wayne County school districts and eligible public school academies, and it includes strong accountability and transparency measures to ensure it produces results for students, and again, if renewed, this millage will continue the 1.9812 mill property tax for six years to help prepare Wayne County students for careers, support special education, and help keep students safe. So again, this is on the upcoming ballot, all schools in Wayne County are involved in this renewal, just wanted to highlight that information. Moving on, as we continue to celebrate our amazing students, I'm so proud of two Plymouth High School students, Olivia Grant and David Howell, they have been named to represent students at the Michigan Department of Education, the Student Advisory Council, and that is, the MDE Student Advisory Council is sponsored by our State Superintendent, Dr. Michael Rice, the group convenes monthly with state education officials to provide perspective and feedback on new and ongoing MDE initiatives and efforts, so again, please join me in congratulating both Olivia and David for being named members of the council, and good luck to them both as they advocate for student state drive, very impressive for our young people. At PCCS, we consistently pride ourselves in talking about safety as being a priority in everything that we do, both during both during the day and after school. We're pleased to announce that our staff received another tool to help keep students safe recently at the Plymouth High School football game. We received an automated defibrillator, and this was provided by the NFL through a grant, and we're going to thank our own Michigan State Representative, Ranji Farie, who was instrumental in helping Plymouth Canton be chosen to receive this AED. So we want to definitely express our gratitude, and we had the opportunity to accept that at the game on this Friday, so we want to thank you for that. And other safety-related news, I want to thank our Michigan State Representative, Jason Morgan, who took the time last week to come out and visit PCCS's Secure, Security Command Center. He wanted to learn more about our district's state-of-the-art security systems. We know we talk consistently about our systems and how we are working to really set a high standard of excellence for our students and safety here and the state, using our high-tech approach for safety and security. Representatives Morgan's visit is a testament to the hard work of Director of School Safety and Security, Mr. Josh Meyer and his staff, who strive every single day to keep students and staff safe at all district schools. And I continue to report, not only do we have this visit from our state rep, but we are consistently receiving calls from other school districts across the state, just wanting to know what it is that we are doing, how we have successfully utilized our 31A and 90, AA and 30, and 97A grant funds to really enhance our security and safety for students and staff. We continue to be appreciative of the investment from our state, and the most recent supplemental that will add an additional 125 million for 31AA, that is one-time funding, so we want to continue to advocate for that support, because we have these amazing systems, and we have to make sure that we have a plane for, a plan for sustainability, which always includes funding. So just want to thank State Representative for being here and continuing to be an advocate for school safety. I'm going to say, one of the strengths of our district, we heard it the other evening when we were having our interviews for our board seat, is the diverse makeup of the community that we hold, and many of our candidates talked about that. I was so honored to celebrate part of that diversity this past weekend, when I attended the annual SIC Heritage Banquet. This banquet highlights SIC heritage, culture and tradition, with an emphasis on community outreach, interfaith understanding, and youth involvement. That was the first time that I was able to make that, and I appreciated the invitation, but definitely was honored, and will continue to, to, to participate moving forward. Many of our students were able to participate in some of the festivities and traditions, and so just wanted to acknowledge and honor that. Finally, last evening, I always have an, I'm excited to join our young people with their induction in NHS. We had over 200 new members to PCEP's National Honor Society last evening. They're recognized for their work in the classroom, their academic success, but also the group's mission is asking students to embrace the spirit of volunteerism and service to the community, and absolutely one of their pillars is about leadership. So please join me in congratulating our newest members today. I will say, last year, we had accolade after accolade, and you know how competitive I am, so I will plan on continuing to amplify these accomplishments of our young people. I believe 24-25 is going to be even greater than last year. Our staff gives them the environment they nurture and support, so that our students are able to excel, and I'm very proud of the work that we're doing here in Plymouth Canton. That concludes my report this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Merritt. On to Teaching and Learning with Beth Raell.
Thank you. Tonight, I want to welcome to the podium Anthony Rella, our Executive Director of Middle Schools and K-12 Student Support Systems, who's going to go over a presentation with you tonight to share about some middle school highlights. So you'll remember last spring, we did highlights at the elementary, middle, and high school levels, and we've decided this year that we'll do that in the fall and in the spring to just kind of share more with the board and the community about the great work that's taking place. So I'm going to turn it over to Anthony.
Thank you, Ms. Raell. Good evening, President Christensen, Board of Education, Dr. Merritt and core team, and the PCCS community, and the audience and at home. It's a present, pleasure and privilege to be representing the middle level tonight, and I kind of just feel like this is middle-level night. Like, this has just been amazing, and, and really, I kind of feel like the, not nearly the closing act. When is, what do you call it when the opening act is better than, than the closing act? Like, it was just amazing. So I'm honored tonight to be highlighting the work of our middle school deans of student success. The deans of student success are a critical component of our middle-level implementation of a multi-tiered systems of support, and it would have, I was so excited following the kids, I forgot to click to the first slide, so my apologies. The dean's work is aligned with Goals A and B in the district's dynamic plan, as their work supports building-wide culture and climate while providing direct support to individuals and small groups of students. Whoops. Sorry, a little delayed. Last time I was before the community, I highlighted the connection of our work to the five essential attributes that characterize successful middle schools as identified by the Association of Middle-Level Education, also known as AMLE. Successful middle schools are responsive to the dynamic, often unpredictable uniqueness of young adolescents. Successful middle schools do this by challenging all students to excel to high expectations, while empowering students with a space to utilize their agency to make a difference in their school and community, and you've heard that tonight already. Successful middle schools are equitable, ensuring all students have access to resources that they need to grow and meet their goals, while providing all students with engaging educational experiences that really matter to them. At the middle, at the middle level, we believe that if our middle school program is responsive, challenging, empowering, equitable, and engaging, then we will strengthen students' core foundations in ways that will support their graduating from the park, embodying the skills and dispositions that compose our learner profile. So, come on, struggling with the clicker tonight. So that belief is further exemplified in the logic model for our middle-level program, and as we look at the logic model, I want to draw our attention to the items that reference the MTSS framework, as we will be looking at the roles and responsibilities of the middle school deans of student support within the context of their role on the mult, within the MTSS framework. So breaking it down further, on this slide, we see the major roles and responsibilities of the middle school deans broken down by MTSS tier. As a reminder, Tier One represents our school-wide initiatives and learnings that are foundational to our program. These are initiatives and learnings that impact all students. As you can see, these responsibilities are mostly proactive and are designed to support positive school-wide culture and climate. Broadly, their work in this space is supporting school-wide PBIS structures, otherwise known as Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports, and they're partnering with building administrators to facilitate grade-level and class-level meetings that teach expectations and build culture, and they engage in active supervision throughout the school day, interacting with students to build relationships, looking to catch them while they're doing things that they should be doing, and reinforcing those behaviors, and reminding them of the expectations before a poor decision is made, with a real emphasis on being proactive, rather than reactive. In alignment with the essential attribute of responsiveness, however, the deans also work with students experiencing conflict. Sometimes it's to help them problem-solve their way into harmony, and other times it's facilitating restorative circle or restorative conference to repair harm. With respect to Tiers Two and Three, these are students that have been identified as requiring additional supports and structures to be successful. All of our deans have a student caseload of approximately 30 to 35 students, who they support individually and in small groups. Each of these students has an intervention plan that is written collaboratively with the student and their family, based upon input from staff members. The deans meet regularly with these students and monitor data such as attendance, behavior, and academics to judge and monitor and adjust student progress. Over these next few slides, we're going to put some faces to the position and provide a visual context to the work of our deans. As I said earlier, the deans are a critical component of our building and administrative support team, and they partner very closely with our administrators and our counseling staff. So we'll start in the top left, where we have the Discovery Administrative Team, flanking Mr. Harold Wimmerly in the center, and Mr. Wimmerly's here with us tonight, as is Alex Naroyan from Discovery. Moving clockwise, we have Ms. Jennifer Haynes, the West Dean, between building counselors. To the, to the right, we have the East Dean, Mr. Leon Wallace, standing beside Building Principal Ted Youngless. Moving to the bottom center, we have the Liberty Dean, Julie Nacastri, having a before-meeting touch base, before-school touch base meeting with the school counselor. And then finally, on the left, we have Mr. Darian Bynum, standing between the Pioneer Administrative Team. The main role of the dean is to work directly with students, whether it's providing Tier One instruction or Tier Two support. Moving left to right, we see Mr. Bynum connecting with students while supervising a school trip. Below Mr. Bynum, we see Ms. Haynes facilitating a small circle meeting with sixth-grade students in the hallway. In the top middle, we see Mr. Wimmerly working individually with a student. Below that is Ms. Nacastri posing with the PBIS store student, PBIS store student manager team, which is a leadership group that she supervises. And to the far right is a member of Mr. Wallace's Young Men of Distinction Club. As a reminder, Mr. Wallace is over at East Middle School, and that student is demonstrating to his colleagues, if you will, how to tie a tie. The group is designed to celebrate excellence among young males, and teaches leadership skills, self-awareness, service, positive behavior, and academic excellence. Come on, there we go. As I said, the deans work directly with our students, and most of the time, students are in classes, so the deans go where the students are. So whether it's sitting in student, sitting alongside students in a science or social studies class, or facilitating a community-building circle with a classroom teacher, the deans are there with them. In addition to supporting community in the classrooms, deans are also supporting building-wide culture and climate. Activities could be mini-grade-level circles, again, like you see Ms. Hayes conducting, also in, in the hallway, or a full grade-level activity like the Town Hall bingo game that Mr. Wallace co-facilitated with the counseling staff. To the left, you see photos from Liberty's United Nations Club Fashion Show that Ms. Nacastri co-hosts with a school counselor. In addition to what I've shared, the deans also contribute to elevating school culture and climate in a wide variety of ways, from serving on the building's emergency operations team and building equity teams, to supervising recess and student clubs. Giving life to the roles and responses, abilities of the deans is only part of the story. It's also important that we evaluate the impact. On this slide, we see statements from the five middle school administrative teams. Some of the words that stand out to me, and I won't read all of these to you, but the words that really stand out, trusted adult, repairing relationships, improved school culture and climate, all stakeholders feeling safe, cared for, and heard, students, parents, and staff having everything they need to be successful. It's impactful things, impactful statements. Finally, what do the numbers also say about impact? Looking at the top section of the table to the left, that's entitled Dean of Student Success Caseload Data, during the 23-24 school year, our middle school deans served 189 individual students. 154 out of these 189, almost 82%, met more than half of their individual goals. Okay, what, what does that mean? So putting that in context, in the bottom part of the table, you can see that these 189 students had 694 individual goals. So each student has multiple individual goals, and these goals are related to behavioral, social-emotional, attendance, and academic behaviors that they're engaged in. And you can see that about 80% of those individual goals were met, so 80% of those 694 goals were met. Then thinking about school-wide impact, if we look at the difference between out-of-school suspensions between the 22-23 school year and a 23-24 school year, you'll see that there was a 7% decrease in our out-of-school suspensions across all five middle schools. One of the things in our discussions of the data is, we're attributing this decrease to the support of the deans in implementing school-wide PBIS structures with fidelity, in addition to their work with individual students proactively solving problems before they result in behaviors that require exclusionary discipline, so out-of-school suspensions. And moving forward, we're going to continue to monitor this data, both school-wide and at the caseload level, to continuously improve the service that we provide for our students and their families. So I really appreciate the opportunity to share this information with you tonight, and I welcome any questions anyone has.
Thank you, Mr. Rella. I will start with VP McCoyn.
So I'm assuming that the suspension data was for all middle schools, all students?
Yes.
Not, because you wouldn't, so it, so we're not, we're not able to see, like, the actual impact of what, like, the deans did for their particular students.
Well, that would be within the goals, because not only, not all of the students that are on a dean's caseload would have behavioral goals.
But, like, that is amazing that so many of them met their, their goals. So, so what would be, like, so they each have a caseload, right? So what would be, like, the number of students in a school that perhaps could be served if there was more room? Like, if there was another person that can serve those students? Like, is there enough children that could benefit from, say, a second dean? Because if you're getting this kind of, like, impact, where they're getting, like, 80% of their goals are being met, like, that seems like a huge impact that's being made on, on students?
It is a huge, it is an absolute immense impact, yes.
And I'm wondering if there's a, a population of students who could benefit but are not, because clearly, like, one person in a building can only see so many students.
Right. And it, it's interesting, right? When you have such a immensely skilled group of professional educators, right, I want to say, yeah, like, we'll, we'll take as many as those individuals as, as we can have. So, because all students benefit from the relationships that are built with trusted adults. So, but, building relationships with trusted adults is a, a huge piece of, of what we focus on at the middle school, and there are, you know, the work that the deans do is supported with partnerships with counselors and behavior specialists. So it's, it's a team approach, so I don't, I hope that answered your question.
It was more of a wondering, I guess, but clearly they're, clearly, they're doing a great job.
They're doing an amazing job, yes.
Amy?
Well, I just had a question, because, well, first of all, you know, when we talk about all students being safe, psychologically, emotionally safe, and representative at school, I just have a concern, because, for an example, I am aware, and we all are, of a classroom that has just three, has three flags up, Black Lives Matter, Palestinian, and a pride flag up, and there was a concern, and it's taken until now, from the beginning of the year, to be taken care of, and I'm just concerned that that child wasn't really feeling representative, and had concerns about it, and actually didn't feel safe because of that, or represented. So I don't know, like, how are we determining, and this is a science class, so some of those flags can represent things, like, I know with the pride flag, there's people that have concerns, because they would rather probably, they'd also like to see maybe there are only two gender flags. there are only two gender flag, or two sexes' flag. And then, but, there's concern because there's, I think some students are afraid to say that, because when you do, according to our sex ed curriculum, then you become homophobic, or you're heterosex, or heterophobic. So there's always a fear thing placed on that. And so I think that that's wrong, some people just disagree. And I think that by just seeing one of those, that flag up there, or any, really, I don't even know why we have flags like that in there, but...
Member Picard, may I interject? I just want to understand how your question relates to the dean of students in the middle-school presentation.
This is my question, how is this providing safety? I mean, we have all these different flags. Where's an Israeli flag? If a student was Jewish, that would feel very uncomfortable to have a Palestinian flag in the classroom. I think it'd be more appropriate to have, for this, for a science class, instead of Black Lives Matter, why don't they have a black scientist up there that has achieved many things? I'm questioning, my question is, why is it, why, how is that providing the physical safety for all students? You know, I just don't, I mean, we're all Americans, why not just have the American flag?
I would chair, maybe, a different point in the agenda. We want to talk, to have a discussion. But as it relates to this, and as you saw the dean's job responsibilities, that would be a part of the job responsibilities of dean to oversee the classroom setup.
Okay, well, the classroom setup has that on, in, has those hanging in the classroom. So I kind of figured that was classroom setup.
So again, as we look to this particular presentation, if there's some questions that we can have or address based on the responsibility of the dean, and then I think maybe we can find another opportunity to continue to have your discussion.
Okay, let's cut off again, but, okay.
Okay, member Ahmad.
I just had a quick question, and I'm not sure if you're able to, but would you be able to share examples of a couple of the goals?
So, Mr. Wimberly, could I have you call up just to share an example of, like, a goal you might be working on with a student?
But as a reminder, not using specific student names or information.
Absolutely. Good evening, everyone. So I'm, as you know, I'm new here, but not new to the field. And so one of the things the goals could be, I got one particular kid that came to me today, he's on a plan, and he wants to get off that plan. And so by him wanting to get off that plan, we went down the list today of what entails in that plan. And one of the things that I seen that he really struggled with, because his face was down, and he just felt like, I don't want to be on this because this happened in the past. But I told him, you're still sharing, you're still showing those type of behaviors. How can you learn, how can I teach you to advocate for yourself on the things that you want to highlight? So I got out of my seat, I sat in the chair he was in, and he sat in my seat. And so I had him interview me. Talk to me, and I'll share, I'll give you an example of how we can help you get off of that. And so I sent the email after we finished to the MTSS team at Discovery, saying, on the 28th, I would like him to come and share what he feels he needs and why this plan may not, he may not need it anymore. And so there's some evidence of that. He just wants to, he only want to be on there. So that was one of his goals, I want to come off this plan. He needed it, because evidence showed, when I looked at it when I first got there, phew, okay, yeah, there's a plan needed. But at the end of the day, how can I advocate for kids? And that's something that the deans, that I've learned, that we need to teach kids how to do that. It's a lot more powerful for a kid to come up and to advocate for him or herself as to what they need versus an adult coming in, and I'm standing behind the adult. The kid needs to learn that skill before they even get into high school, and definitely before they get into real world. And so that's one of the goals, and he's going to demonstrate that. But I'm going to coach him, because, again, he, head down, that's the first thing you don't need to do. And I need him to go and get some, we're going to have him go and get some type of written feedback from his teachers. Now that would support him, and it does a second thing. He knows that other adults that teach him, even though they agree with the plan, they also agree that he's improving. And so that's one of the areas, as far as a goal, that we can help this particular student. I just use him because it's fresh on my head today.
So to that point, we can talk about specific goals, like reducing the number of office referrals, increasing attendance, right? Reducing the number of missing assignments. And those could be specific data points that we look at and whatnot. But the more important piece is the modeling of conversations, the modeling of taking accountability and responsibility, and standing up and advocating for yourself, and letting trusted adults know what you need to be successful. So that's the bigger piece, and I appreciate Mr. Wimberly for sharing that that way.
Thank you. Okay, over to Josh.
My question was answered with that, so thank you. Great presentation.
Thanks, Josh.
I have no questions, but thank you for the great presentation.
Thank you.
Members to do?
No questions, we went through this in SPAD and asked our questions. So thank you for another update.
Thank you.
I also have no questions, because we went through this in SPAD. Just a comment that I think it's a fantastic program, and I hope it continues for a long time, because I know it's, I know there's definitely students that benefit from it.
Thank you.
So first, I want to thank Mr. Wimberly. You really brought home the value of the dean of students in that anecdote, and the way you described that you work with students and the collaborative nature, and the students taking self-advocacy in that process. So it's fantastic to do that. To echo back on what Vice President McCoyn said, I think the question that we have as a board is, what do you need from us? Do you need, whether it be more dean of students, whether it be more counselors, whether it be more people in your MTSS support team, that's the question we have, is do you have unmet needs? If you have unmet needs, then we want to make sure that that comes forward to the board so that we can, or through the administration, and then to the board, because I believe that we would be supportive of addressing those unmet needs. Because we really believe in these programs.
I'll step in before responding. What I always say is advocacy from a board seat for Lansing, because when we look at sustainability, that's key. So you always ask us for return on investment to bring data as to these positions that we have. And as much as all of us would say, the need is great, and we need so many positions, the worst thing would be to bring all of these positions and then know that we have to eliminate and take that support away. So the best place is to Lansing to say, how can we continue to have funding to sustain the needed supports for our students?
And I'd also like to respond and say, thank you already for your support of this, because if I take you back in time, you'll remember this was one of the first ESER grant-funded positions, this and the Elementary Student Success Specialist. So as we implemented the deans of student success and student support, you'll hear us kind of frame it both ways, because we've called it both at different times. But as we implemented this program, and then saw the success of it, then it became a general-funded program. So, you know, as we've talked through that over the past couple of years, just want to say thank you to the Board of Education for continuing to support this program and allowing us to keep the deans of student success, because you're seeing the results from the program, so, based on the data.
So perhaps a related question to that is, as we see that there's 189 students that have specific goals that are per the process, but I believe from the conversation that's happened here, those aren't the only students that are being served. There might be more students in that caseload that maybe don't have a goal in the process. Is there a way to quantify the number of students that are served?
So, as I said earlier, there's partnerships with the counselors and behavior specialists and administrators. So there are students that are shared, if you will, right? They may be, they may be on a check-in, checkout plan with a school counselor, but every once in a while, just as a different voice, as a different trusted adult, a dean or administrator may push in and combine to work with a student. So some of those things are hard to quantify that way. And the other piece, too, is, you know, some of the dean, some of the students may move on or off of a caseload, right? We're working with a student, they have an intense intervention, and then they come off the caseload.
As Mr. Wimberly just articulated, is that's the student's goal, and that's awesome.
Correct.
To do that, okay. I just want to make sure that we share for the board and for the community the impact that these resources are having, and the recognition that it's a whole team. You know, at our middle-school level, 189 students is not a huge population, but the impact that they've had on those nearly 200 students is immeasurable. I mean, a huge impact on those students. But I'm sure it's even more students that are part of the population. I just want to make sure that there's some way to surface the total number of students that are served, even if they're not done by the dean of students, but part of the combined support team.
And I would say, as part of our MTSS framework, every single middle-school student is served.
Okay, thank you.
So I also had a question very similar to Treasure Quixote and VP McCoyn, and it was really around the comment of the targeted caseload of 30 students per school. So we have a dean at every middle school, right, a single dean? So do we see, kind of along the same lines, is that 30-student target met at every building? Is there a need at one building that's greater than others? Or are we seeing that kind of equity across all buildings? I guess I...
Yeah, I see it as being equitable across all buildings. And again, there are other professionals in buildings that support students, like our behavior specialists. So at this point, I would say the need is being met. The teams are doing a great job of meeting the needs of students.
Okay, thank you very much.
And think about it as a piece of a bigger puzzle. So we have the deans of student support, we have our counselors, we have our behavior specialists, we have our ELD teachers, our teachers who work with our multilingual learner students, we have our teachers who are specialized in special education programs, we have our administrators, we have all different types of tiers of support, starting with just general classroom support and strong Tier One instruction, advisory and homeroom support. So it's a large puzzle, this is a piece of the puzzle. So as we talk about pieces, you know, different positions and different demogra, different data sets and stuff, it's thinking about the large picture as well. So it's not that only 30 students in each middle school are being supported, it's a piece of a bigger puzzle, so. But they're great questions, because unless we surface that, you, sometimes that can get lost in the bigger piece, so thank you.
I appreciate that clarification.
Can I just have one more question?
Sure.
So do, when you have a group, are you, like, do parents, are they aware that they're in that group, then? Are they giving information on that?
If there was, if there's a group that's being run, or deans have a student on the caseload, yes, that communication happens.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Okay, we are on to action item number 25-10-22, Consider Approval of a Resolution for High School ELA Course Materials for Multicultural Literature. This is a final reading, can I have a motion?
Madam President, I move that we approve a resolution for the high school ELA course material for multicultural literature. Final reading, action item number 25-10-22.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, it was moved by members to do and seconded by Secretary Westra. We did discuss this at our last meeting, but I will open it up for any other questions. Okay, hearing none, well, I'll call for the vote. Those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
Okay, motion carries 6-1. Okay, on to Finance and Operations with Ms. Minnick.
Thank you, President Christensen. We appreciate the opportunity this evening to bring forward for your consideration the replacement of the Plymouth chiller system. We have shared at previous recent board meetings with you about the challenges that we have been experiencing at the park with air conditioning units at all three of our high schools. As you might recall, in June, the board did approve a replacement of a chiller system for Salem High School. And this evening, we bring forward a request for the replacement at the Plymouth High School, that chiller system. This particular unit was damaged during a storm that we had at the end of June, June 20th, which resulted in brownout of the motor and other parts within this chiller system. It is inoperable, and it is beyond repair. So as a result of that, given the high temperatures throughout June and July, and even through early September, we did rent a system to keep, rental chiller system, rather, to keep the air temperature inside the building comfortable for those that work throughout the year. And so that unit continues to run until we flip the switch, if you will, from cooling to heating this fall season. But with that, this storm, as a result of this storm and the inoperability of the unit, we have filed an insurance claim with our insurance carrier. We have indication that it will be covered, yet we know that they are continuing to investigate and require some additional documentation and things. But we do anticipate that it will be fully covered. If it is not, we will support the, whatever insurance proceeds we may receive, along with bond program dollars. The Plymouth chiller has been identified as needing replacement in the 2020 bond program. So it will either be fully, or at least partially, covered by those insurance proceeds, and then perhaps additional bond monies. With that, we have brought, I'll also note that at previous board meetings, we've spoken about the challenges we've had at Canton High School air conditioning. We've been working to request some quotes for that unit, and we have that just this late afternoon. So we will bring that forward for review at the next Finance and Operations Committee meeting for the full board review at our next full board meeting. But with that, we are asking for your review of this replacement at Plymouth. In response to that, we have a quote from the Omnia corporative bid. The total of this equipment is $179,852. It has a 36-month parts-only warranty. And as well, we anticipate that, as I mentioned, that we will return, of course, and do away with the rental unit once we're able to turn on the heating systems. But I'm happy to take any questions you may have regarding the replacement of the chiller at Plymouth High School. We also have our Director of Operations, Matt Lentz, with us this evening for any specific questions you may have around the equipment and operations. Thank you.
We'll start with VP McCoyn.
I don't really have any questions. I mean, if it's not working, you need to replace it. Kind of like, you know, something in your house. Not something you love to spend the money on, but you have to have it.
Thank you.
I don't have any questions either, thank you.
No questions. Josh?
No questions, thank you.
No questions, thank you.
I know one?
No questions.
Only one question, how long is the warranty on the chiller?
Thank you, it's a 36-month parts-only warranty.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And related to that question, I see that there's an optional warranty that can be done for lengths of up to five years. Is that something we considered, is that something worthwhile for us to do?
I will ask for Matt's opinion on that. We're still discussing that, but if you have comments or thoughts?
Good evening, board. Yes, I'm still kind of reviewing that, and trying to see if it's something worthwhile. I was given two kind of proposals. One was kind of a less investigation, more kind of biannual inspection. And the other one was more of a service plan. I'm still kind of weighing the cost-benefit analysis of a little what we should do, if anything, if there's any real payback. So I'm not at a point where I want to make a recommendation on that at this time.
Got it, so two questions, then, the follow-up from that. Looks like there's a 12-monthly, or 12-week lead time on this. So it doesn't really merit us doing this as a first and final, because it's not going to come in while it's, while we need air conditioning in place. So that's my understanding of that process. What would happen, then, my second question is, is what would happen in the, if there was an extended warranty that would come through? Would there be an amended thing that would come through to the board? Or if it's below the threshold, it would just be an administrative decision? What's the thinking?
My general thought, and what I've done in the past, is more of just an informational, since it would be a service, we would just say, you know, we've used this service at this type of equipment, would be my thoughts on that.
And we're happy to bring that back for clarification when we have that next reading at our next board meeting.
Yeah, so just, okay, that's great, just procedurally. I know that generally, all capital purchases come before the board. Would a service purchase related to a capital purchase come before the board? Or if it exceeded, I think it's like $26,000 or $29,000, would it come, those would still come forward?
So if we think about the bond program, maybe just as a reference point, most of that is construction, and that is a service. So we bring that forward, of course, under particular MCL statutes. But when we think about perhaps the rental unit, if we think about programming or installation... But when we think about perhaps the rental unit, if we think about programming or installation, we do often bundle those, but if they are one-offs, perhaps not, because they are standalone services. With this, I would suggest that we do bring that back, as I mentioned, for a comprehensive understanding for the board of exactly what this purchase entails, and our recommendation for both the equipment and that service agreement.
Perfect, so I guess the related...
It's a bundle.
So the relate, I appreciate it for this specific circumstance, that that will come before to the board. I would like to take as an action item for board notes is, are purchased services that are above the threshold for capital services, do they come forward for board approval? Just to understand whether they do or they don't, and if they don't, I'd like us to maybe have a discussion as to whether they should.
Thank you. May I clarify that under MCL 381267, it does require that any renovation, any land purchase, any addition, any significant renovation work to any building or site in excess of that bid threshold, does require competitive quotes or bids, or cooperative pricing, and then board approval as well.
So that makes sense for all of those items. I just am asking questions about services in general. For example, we decided to go out and hire a new attorney, and we projected the project, or that the cost annually for that attorney would be $50,000. Even though it's not related to something that's mandated by the state law, I think it would be something that we, as a board, when it succeeds that threshold, I think there should be a conversation as to whether we're seeing those services here in the board meeting.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm not saying we have to do it, I just think, A, I'd like to understand whether we are, because I've seen these things come forward in the past, but they may be related specifically to specific state law projects, but I'd like to understand generally whether we're doing this, and if not, then we can have a discussion as to whether we could or should.
We definitely can bring it back, but for the example with legal, in the beginning, the board sets aside, as a part of our first bylaws, the different legal firms, and then we set a budget for legal. And so if we're utilizing a service or an agreement, then that is something that we would approve. If there's something that would go beyond that service, then that would be something that we would bring forward to the board. So I hear what you're saying in terms of service agreement, we'll bring that back for discussion?
Yeah. Just trying to think about it as, in, related to the service contract, you know, let's say hypothetically, the service contract was a million dollars. It may not be something that's required to come forward to the board, but I think the board would want to have a discussion on something like that.
Absolutely. You wouldn't have that in our budget.
I get it, I get it. I'm just trying to understand, procedurally, how we can have oversight of large purchases that are unusual in nature.
That makes sense. We'll bring that back.
Okay.
Thank you. I do have another question around timing. So you've mentioned a 12-week lead time for the chiller itself. Do we understand that, what's the anticipated timing for the insurance claim? When should we know more about that?
Thank you, that's a terrific question. We don't know exactly. We have strong indication in writing that, it appears that it will be funded, yet we, they're sending additional people out tomorrow to take a look and...
Yes, we did a virtual inspection initially, and that's how we got to the point of, we will fund it, we understand you need temporary cooling, and they brought the systems out, set them up, got us running. At this time, actually, as of yesterday, I was notified, they would like to bring somebody out and see it in person. So we are, yes, we're working on getting somebody here a little bit tomorrow, and it sounds like we're going to do something maybe a little more coordinated next week, it's a little more in-depth. But at this point, yes, as Jill said, we've already got this indication from the virtual inspection we did, this was early July, I believe, that we're headed in that direction.
Okay, and then assuming, you know, this is approved and moved forward, when would we be installing this unit?
So we got a 12-week lead time. So we'll come back to the board, and we'll get approval, and then at that point, we will cut a PO, get it going. I'm more focused on, when are we going to start it? And I'm thinking right about the end of April, 1st of May, when we would start to do our normal switch over from heat to cooling. We would do some initial testing, make sure all the systems are operating, but then we do that initial turnover, that initial startup, would also kind of be the initial startup. So based off that, I'm thinking April or May, kind of where my head is currently sitting.
Okay.
If I could append to your comments, we've spoken that the weather, the snow, doesn't really affect that installation. But in terms of the timeframe, what would you anticipate? Would you happen to have a...
As far as an actual install? With the assumption that, I'm going to think this through, we get approval in the middle of November, no, it's okay. In the middle of November, we place our order 1st of December, so we'll probably see boots on the ground early March, with the rest of the equipment coming in, probably late March, early April, would be my guess. But we start some of the demo, some of the teardown, some of the prep, I would say mid to late March, is probably when we start to see boots on the ground.
And that work would not affect classroom instruction?
Correct.
And just to clarify, this will come forward on our next meeting on October 22nd, so you'll have approval before the end of October, assuming that we approve, but it would be before the end of October.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we're on to action item number 25-10-23. Consider approval of a resolution for a custodial contract renewal with ABM Industries. This is a final reading. Can I please have a motion?
Madam President, I move that we consider approval of a resolution for a custodial contract renewal with ABM Industries. Final reading, action item 25-10-23.
Can I have a second?
Second.
It was moved by Treasurer Kehoe and seconded by members to do. We did talk about this at our last meeting. I will open it up for any other questions or comments? No? Okay. Let's call, I'll call for the vote. Those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
Okay, motion carries 6-1. Okay, now we are on to Section E, Citizens' Comments. We have a few here. First up, we have Mary Lockwood.
Hi, assume I come up here. Yes, please come on up.
I'm used to being in front of the microphone.
Thank you for allowing me to speak to you. I'm looking all around the room, and I'm looking at all of the teachers that are here, and what influence you have over your students. I didn't have that. I'd like to tell you a little bit, and I know I only have three minutes, but my husband doesn't think that's possible. I grew up in Detroit, I was raised by a single mom, we lived in a housing project, and here I am, a longtime resident of Plymouth. So I'm looking at your poster there that says it's all for the children, and I'm hoping that's how you really feel, because that should include both children in the womb and outside of the womb. You see, I chose three times over to have an abortion, and that is something that I live with every day. It was a wrong decision, it was a bad decision, because I wasn't given any kind of leadership from my teachers, from anybody who was influential in my life. So I made those decisions because I thought it was the only decision I had. So you, as people involved with teenagers, and this is a whole different world from the time that I had my abortions, which was in the 70s and 80s, you have great influence over children, teenagers, who are looking for direction. And I guess what I'd like to say is, to be able to present to teenage children that there are other choices besides what's legal in this state, what used to be legally nationally. So I'd like you to think about, before you advise any student, before you would talk to any student about abortion as the only choice, there are many, many choices, and I'd like you to think about the other choice, which is life. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you very much. On to Sebastian.
It's been a long time since I've been involved in board stuff, actually, it's been a long time. But yeah, my name is Sebastian, I went to Plymouth Canton for many years, and I graduated in 2019, and yeah, and I ran for office. The reason that I'm here is, so I wasn't planning on coming here originally, I haven't been involved in board stuff in a long, long time, but like, a week or two ago or something, I ran into a parent who told me that you guys had repealed the parental consent, well, the prohibition for referral for abortion. And I mean, I looked into it, and I wanted to understand why. And I know the state repealed that law, so why should we keep that law on the books? You know, it's no longer, you know, in effect. Other districts have kept it, and I mean, right here, we had Mary's testimony. I've, so this is something that's been very, very important to me, because I've gotten to friends, people I've known, who have been through hell. I know people who've gone, a friend of mine was sexually abused, and just the things that people go through, is that, you know, they need to have their parents involved in all of these things. And if we remove that requirement, and the truth is, yes, we still need parental consent in Michigan, but let's be honest, that's not going to last very long. It's unconstitutional. Just, once it gets challenged in front of a court, the Michigan Supreme Court will strike it down, because under Prop 3, it's not going to, it's not going to hold up. And so what's going to happen then? Well, the districts will be able to choose, what do we do? I really encourage you, each and every single one of you, to consider just putting some sort of like a motion, or something to say, okay, we're going to refer to parents when these things come up. And something even more is, yeah, just like what Mary was talking about, offering options. So it could be financial, it could be psychological, it could be anything. But the people that I've gotten the chance to talk to have been through so many different, difficult things, and some of them, you know, felt as though it was their only choice to have an abortion. And this is not really, I guess, I'm not here to say, okay, I know people have disagreements, okay, is it right or is it wrong? But this is about, we need to offer options for students, and we need to make sure that the parents are involved in all of these things. So I know it's not a part of the state law anymore, it's not important in that sense, but you as a board, there is a legal vacuum. You can put in a policy that says, we're going to defer to parents, if a student is in a bad situation, and they need help, or they come to us, we can say, okay, we will help you with your parents. Because at the end of the day, you know, parents are there, parents have helped me through all of the crap I've gone through, and they will be there for all the others. So, yeah, I just, and of course, you know, I just want to say, I don't have anything against you, I have a lot of respect for each and every single one of you. I just ask you to please consider passing something to protect these kids in these situations. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. That concludes our citizens' comments. On to Section F, Discussion. Now, I know, Member Picard, you had brought up a topic during our middle school Deeds of Students conversation, and in order to bring up a discussion item, we do need more than one, I think we need at least two board members to kind of bring that forward. Do we have a second board member interested in bringing that forward for discussion today?
Can you articulate what is exactly you want to talk about?
Well, I'm just concerned about, you know, certain, like, for instance, like having those kind of flags in a science classroom, where you're just representing certain students and not, you can't really represent all students in a classroom, because it's, because it's, I mean, you just don't have the space. But I'm just saying, it just seems that to pull out just certain ones to represent doesn't really, when we talk about equitable, it doesn't really do that. And so I guess my thing would be, is to maybe have some kind of a flag, you know, why don't we just go with the American flag? I mean, there's other ways of putting things up there. Like I said, like you could have a picture of some, of a scientist, or something like that, to represent different things, and not so much a, I don't think some of those are, people consider activist groups and things, and it's not so much, you know, where it can get kind of, it's not even, I mean, so, I mean, how would a student feel in a classroom if they're Jewish, and all they see is the Palestinian flag? I mean, I don't think that's really appropriate. I think, we're in America, I think that's what we need to be focused on, is we're in America. And we're not a country with a bunch of little countries, we're a country, we need to have respect for that, and expect respect for that. And, and so, you know, anybody can hang a flag wherever they want, they can wear it, I mean, constitutional right, you can do whatever you want, but, but I think to, in a classroom where other kids have to sit, and required to sit, I think that's going a little beyond, especially, I mean, if you have a police officer, your parents' police officer, what, I mean, Black Lives Matter wants to defund the police, so.
Do you think we're going further into the discussion?
I'm not sure that it is a board role...
That's exactly what I was going to say.
... to discuss what is appropriate for teachers to put up in their plans.
That was exactly what my answer is.
Well, I think it is.
I don't believe it is, so.
Why wouldn't it be?
Because I don't think the...
So I'm going to pause, everybody. Is this, do we have a second board member's consent to continue this conversation about classroom decor and flags?
I don't think it's within our purview to discuss that.
We can make a policy.
So at this point, we're going to table that, and if you garner some support from another board member and want to bring that forward, we can have a discussion.
We'll have a discussion.
Okay? All right. Follow-up board questions. Now, what do we have here from last meeting?
First follow-up question, we had a board requesting a copy of the multicultural literature course, and we did provide that material, so I think that is satisfied. Second was, a request was made to confirm that all district website pages be updated to show the latest construction bond updates, I think addressed that in board notes, and that is something that has been satisfied, that will be ongoing. The third, that's real, I'm going to lean to you, that was a Senate Bill 567, I don't think we provided a response to that with distinctly a clarity on, was the bill referencing all students or only those identified in the group?
That would be outstanding, and I'll take care of it in board notes this week.
All right, we will take care of that on Friday, so we'll leave that on the list.
Okay, and then, the questions that were brought forward at today's meeting was around purchased services, and whether or not that comes to board oversight and approval. I feel like we did somewhat satisfy that answer, but we can...
I think we'd look at more clarity, and then we might want a discussion depending on that. So what I would advocate is, is that we get the answer formally in board notes, as to what is and what is not, and then, as such, we could consider whether, in our next meeting in the discussion area, whether there's support to have this be brought forward for a broader discussion.
Okay. Did we have any other follow-up questions from today's meeting that I missed?
I just have one, wow, I have an addition, additional question. In your president's report, you showed a graphic of what the millage supports. Could we get that? Because it's fantastic.
I believe it's actually, Mr. Krieger, I believe it's on our website, is that, have we added our, I apologize.
Give him a second, he knows, speakers need to come to the microphone before they say anything.
Good evening. Yes, so that, all of those materials are available under the tab on our website that references the bond renewal, or the millage renewal. It's important to note that those materials comply with state law, that does not allow advocacy for, but the majority of those, including that graphic, are educational in nature to provide evidence of the benefits of the millage for the district.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right. Now we're on to adjournment. Let's, I'm going to adjourn the meeting at 8:29 PM. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please bring that up, you know, appreciate that.
I was just...
Yes.
This is the Weet County School Board's...
I was just interested.
Well, it's nice to have you.
Here, don't make me, don't make me memorize all this stuff.